All right, if we'd like to call our meeting to order and get started. We're welcome to our work session for the month of March. Appreciate you being with us. At the beginning of our meetings, we like to have a moment of silence and we'll invite you to join us for a moment of silence and then we'll introduce some students that will lead us in the pledge. So, if you would, and join us. Mr. Lusk, you're gonna be up and do your presentation if you'll introduce the students and lead us in the pledge first and then you can go into your presentation.
Sure. Come on up, guys. I'd like to introduce three students to you. These are three of my Hamilton Career Center students who are taking a part in what we call the NOW program. We've got Colin Keelon from Wahaahah High School, Olivia Grant from Wahaahah High School, and we also have Mr. Noah Sheriff from West Oak. Go ahead, guys.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll have a presentation from Mr. Lusk at the Career Center and Mr. Williams from the Adult Ed Program. So, Mr. Lusk, we'll start with you.
Thank you for the opportunity to let me come out and brag on my kids a little bit today. In particular, I want to introduce these three to you. I thought we had four coming, but Paul didn't join us. What we're gonna talk about today is what we call the NOW program, which stands for nurturing Oconee's workforce. The students that I already introduced just a little bit, I want to let you know a little bit more about them. Olivia's a Wahaahah High School student. She's currently a welding student at our school. Colin is taking machine tool technology and he's currently enrolled in welding. And as you see, Noah, he's a West Oak High School student and he's involved in our engineering program with Mr. Jonas Crooks, project lead the way. You're currently in the capstone course, correct? Or you're in the capstone course with engineering design. Paul Wilson, who is also gonna be with us tonight, he's one of our welding students. Just, and what I want to do today is just highlight this one little program. We spoke earlier in the summer about the NOW program and I just want to give you some updates on where we are right now with NOW. Like I said, NOW stands for nurturing Oconee's workforce. It's a joint collaboration between the Oconee Economic Alliance and the school district of Oconee County. Anytime I speak with a parent group or student group or a community group, this is kind of the slide I always talk with when I explain what NOW is. This is the profile of SC graduate. In that profile of SC graduate, they basically identify three areas. When this was a collaborative engagement where it was higher education, it was industry leaders, it was secondary ed, and they said, when a student graduates from a school in South Carolina, how do we know that student is prepared? And then they came up with these kind of these three categories. That first category, if you'll look where it says world-class knowledge, that's what all of our high schools are really good at. That's what you think of when you think of public education. You think of those rigorous standards, language arts, math, science, those kind of things, kind of the X's and O's or the reading, writing, and arithmetic side of school. But we try to concentrate on at the Career Center, those bottom two categories. We do a great job up there with number one, but unfortunately, that's just the third equation. What we try to do or concentrate on more are those bottom two categories, world-class skills and life and career characteristics, creativity, innovation, critical thinking, integrity, self-direction. Our programs really center in all those things. If we wanted to maybe highlight those more than we have in the past, then we thought the NOW program was gonna be a great way to do that. We felt as a school district, when we were entering into this program, that we needed to start sending a new message. We needed to broaden the definition of success. You know, we always do a great job of highlighting those kids that are signing their letter of intent to go play basketball at school, X, Y, or Z. We do a great job of talking about those kids that are getting full rides when it comes to academic scholarships and those kind of things. We want to make sure that people understand that the definition of success is a lot broader than that. We think the NOW program can do that. We wanted to actually put some roots into what STEM education is. We talk a lot about science, technology, engineering, and math, but we think that by tying this to local businesses and industry and talking about what science and technology looks like, then we would do a good, better job of that. And we want to celebrate employment and independence. And we wanted to basically link these students to local facilities and talk about the skills that they're learning in my building, what they will translate to in a career. And that's kind of the message we wanted to send with the NOW program. We also were really wanting to celebrate this idea of growing our own. So, we modeled this after some European-style apprenticeship models where we see that it's been going on in Europe for, you know, for hundreds and hundreds of years. There's been kind of a rebirth over there of apprenticeship. We wanted to kind of embrace that. We're really excited about trying to keep local talent local. We want our best and our brightest to end up getting jobs here. Unfortunately, a lot of our skilled tradesmen that we're training at our school are going on to Greenville Tech, maybe going to BMW, those kind of places, GE, and we want to try to keep them local. So, we've, that's one of our things. We believe very strongly that we invest in our kids, that they'll invest back in us. People come here for a reason. People retire here for a reason. It's a great place to live. Our kids want to stay here. We want to give them more opportunities. And we just think in general, it's important to give our kids a work-based learning opportunity. So, that's kind of where NOW came out of it. So, what we did is we started out with 32 kids scattered over the three high schools. We asked parents, teachers, administrators to recommend kids that they identified as hard-working, dependable, hands-on, those kind of kids that back in the day, you wouldn't mind just kind of tossing your keys to and saying, hey, I need to get my oil changed. And it was just those kind of just hard-working, good kids. Those were some of the first criteria we used. And then we wanted this first cohort of nurturing Oconee's workforce to really focus on manufacturing, because I don't believe our parents, our students, or in a lot of cases, our school leaders understand how manufacturing is the lifeblood of our local economy. So, what we did is back in October, we kicked off at Borg Warner. We took these 30 kids down to Borg Warner to the largest manufacturing employer in the county and we kicked off this NOW program. We identified some goals for the program. These goals included to increase student awareness of the opportunities and the technical careers around here, to visit these local plants like Borg Warner, highlight those skills back to the profile of the graduate, those essential life and career characteristics. We wanted to give the students networking opportunities. Colin, for example, I notice now that when we go on a tour of Colin, he's the first one to kind of find out where that plant manager is or where that human resources director is. And he's gonna look them in the eye and he's gonna shake their hand and he's gonna ask them a question. These students are learning what it means to network, what it means to get out there, and they're starting to understand what it means to network. And then ultimately, our goal is to give these selected students some preferential positions when we're talking about apprenticeships for the summer. And that's where my team has been working really, really hard to secure those apprenticeships for this summer right now. We moved on to next month and we went to Just Aircraft. We went from the largest manufacturing facility to one of the smallest manufacturing facilities right down here in Wahaahah where they build airplanes. I don't know if any of you guys knew that we build airplanes right here in Wahaahah. The characteristic we highlighted that day was creativity and innovation. What better way to highlight creativity and innovation than show that we make airplanes right here in Wahaahah, South Carolina? Couple of slides here, you can see, we talked about machining. We have a lot of machinists in our program. See where you've got right there, you've got a CNC machine with a feeder going right there. We talked about welding. Hey, you made a slide. There you go, buddy. We talked about welding. See what it looks like down there at Just Aircraft as well. So, we went from the biggest manufacturing facility at Borg Warner where they make transfer cases for four-wheel-drive trucks all over the county, all over the world, to a little place in Wahaahah where they make airplanes. We moved on to Sandvik. We highlighted Global Perspective. Sandvik's a worldwide company that got facilities, I think it was in over 19 countries. Arun, the plant manager there, was talking about, hey, you come work here at Sandvik, you get to go get trained all over the world. You go spend a couple of months in Sweden and learn how we do things. Really an eye-opening experience for our kids when we went to Sandvik. In January, we visited Itron right down the road. And Itron's been here for over 50 years. They've evolved with the times. One of the other programs we like to, that's a part of our NOW program, is our Mechatronics program, which is really key at Itron. Everything is really moved to robotics and mechanization and that kind of stuff. And Itron, I really highlighted a lot of those things. Kids had a great visit down there. Just last month, we visited two plants down on Highway 11. We visited ITT and ITech South. And again, they were learning about those opportunities they had there. We had a great chance with ITech South to understand that they make a product that is used over at Itron. That was a great learning experience for them. But again, the kids are asking good questions, they're networking, they're starting to understand the opportunities. And we're just not talking about jobs. We're talking about careers. We're talking about high-paying careers. And now they're starting, it's starting to put a little teeth into what they're learning in school in terms of the math or in terms of what they're learning in my facility. So, what's next? Tomorrow, actually, we're going to BASF in Seneca. We're gonna look at what BASF does. Does anybody know what BASF does in Seneca? Anybody know? They take the catalytic converters off of used vehicles, take them off, they cut them off, they go through a smelting process, they boil them down, and they extract the precious metals. There's a precious metal that's used in the catalytic conversion process and they boil that down there. So, tomorrow's gonna be a great example to talk about, hey, you learned about this in chemistry, this is what really happens in real life. In Koya, we're going, in May, we're going to visit Koya. We've currently got some seniors down there at Koya. For example, just to give you an idea of where this program's building towards, these are juniors, they're about to go to their summer internships. But at Koya, we have some senior co-op students right now who, instead of coming to me, they're earning credit for coming to me, but they're going to Koya and they're currently making $16 an hour. These are seniors in high school making $16 an hour. These are the opportunities that are out there. We've been working on resume portfolio creation with STEM Premier, which is kind of like a LinkedIn for kids. We're doing interview prep. We're doing some summer internship interviews, application processes taking place at the end of April. We're setting up for those summer internships that we're really excited about, the senior year co-ops that I just talked about. And ultimately, our goal was signing day. Signing day's gonna be when these kids graduate. A year from now, we're gonna have local industry saying, hey, Colin, I want you to come work for me. I'm gonna pay for your two-year degree at Tri-County Tech. If you want to go into Clemson for a four-year mechanical engineering degree, that's great, but it's really important for you to stay a part of our county and to be a part of our facility. We just wanted to highlight this one little program tonight. This is what's going on at the Career Center. This is where we're headed with all our programs right now. So, if you've got a child or if you've got a niece or nephew or a grandchild or a cousin or something, they're asking about, mention the Career Center, tell them it's the place to be. We're excited about what's going on. We're really proud of these kids. It was very important that we selected the right kids and these kids have been a great example for the possibilities that we've got through the Career Center. Thank you for your opportunity and thank you for your continued support for the Career Center. Thanks.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Williams, now?
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chad.
It goes to them. You don't know if it's on. It's just for the recording.
You won't hear it in the room.
Chad, use it for media.
Thank you, Chad.
Listen, Abbott and other board members, Dr. Thorson, the administrative team, thank you for giving us the opportunity at adult education to serve our adult learners in Oconee County. Several things we want to highlight today as we come before you that we think and we know that are happening at Oconee Adult Ed that I think you will be pleased to see. And I have with me Ms. Sarah Cook, who's gonna be my spokesperson today. But before she comes up, she's gonna highlight some things and we'll talk about the awards that we've just gotten. We have today with us also our volunteer, our tutor, Mr. Ed Shelton, that we'll bring up, that she's gonna introduce. And we also have a special presentation we do from Rotary, Seneca Golden Corner Rotary and Seneca donating money to Adult Ed for our scholarships. So, we'll do all of that in just a moment, but again, we want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to serve our adult learners. At this time, Ms. Sarah Cook.
We have some exciting news in adult education. This year, we have hopped on the technology bandwagon. We actually have a Facebook page that we have started. So, if you go to Facebook and look up Oconee Adult Education, you can keep up with all of our graduates and everything that's going on in our program. And this is a way that we can reach so many more students. All of our students have Facebook, all of them network with their friends. And so, this was something that we've been looking at for several years now and we finally got Mr. Williams on board. And so, we're able to highlight our graduates, highlight the students who have earned a career readiness certificate, highlight those that are making progress and making gain, and put the word out there that we are here to help the adult learners in Oconee County. So, that's some exciting news that we have. Program highlights, this year, our literacy and English as a second or other language program has been highlighted. There's been an increased interest in the community. We've had an influx of volunteers coming in to teach our literacy students and our English as a second or other language students. We, at this point in time, we have awarded 37 high school equivalency diplomas and we're testing weekly, so there will be more to come. We have several students who are lacking one or two subtests to finish that up. We have three high school diplomas that we have, that we've awarded this year. And then a career readiness certificate. This was, these are students who have taken work keys and they've earned either a bronze, silver, or gold certificate. We have 29 students who have earned a bronze certificate, 91 students who have earned a silver certificate, and 26 students who have earned a gold certificate. These are things that our industries in Oconee County are looking for. They're looking for that silver and that gold certificate because it tells them that our students are work-ready. They're ready to come in, they have the skills that are necessary to be productive in their The awards that Mr. Williams was talking about, Ms. Veronica Main, who is one of our dearest employees, she's one of our backbones, she was awarded for 23 years of service in adult education. Ms. Heather Spoon was also awarded for 10 years of service in adult education. We also were awarded the NCRC award, which we had the highest percentage of career readiness certificates for a small program, 158. We were also awarded the ESL Aggregate Average Award for our students achieving an NRS level gain. And we were also awarded the post-testing percentage award. We have exceeded the state minimum standard for post-testing. And so, those are three awards that we were awarded at our celebrating success luncheon in February. So, those are exciting things for us that were going on. Our volunteer spotlight, I'd like to invite Mr. Shelton to come up. Mr. Shelton is our volunteer of the year this year. He has been serving Oconee Adult Education for five years. He is an energetic, enthusiastic, effective, and engaging instructor. He absolutely comes in and shows students a love of learning. He shows students a love of teaching. He, you know, he creates relationships with these students that sometimes the teacher can't create. He just takes these students and brings them to the next level. He takes students that at times we think, how are we gonna reach this one? And Mr. Shelton is able to do that. He's able to sit down with them, one-on-one or in a small group, and he's able to reach them. And we just can't thank him enough for all of his hard work and dedication to our program and for all the hard work he's put in to helping students pass that math test and get that high school equivalency diploma. We appreciate everything you do, Mr. Shelton. Thank you so much.
We'll send it to y'all, y'all can use it on your Facebook site.
I'm just happy to have the opportunity to work with these folks. I started to call them kids, but some of them are almost as old as I am. But no, and I appreciate having a facility like Code that offers these folks a second chance. Maybe they didn't make it through high school, in some cases, didn't make it through junior high, but they're back and they're giving it another shot. So, I'm happy to be a part of it. Okay? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton.
Thank you.
This year, we have started an adult education across the state, a Career Pathways Initiative. This is a partnership with local businesses, with the Technical College, and with adult education. And our chosen career pathway, much like the Career Center, is manufacturing. It is, you know, the backbone to Oconee County. And we have a student who has actually started going through the Ibest program. This is a program that partners with Tri-County Technical College. She has not finished her GED yet, but she is able to take classes at Tri-County Tech and she is able to work through getting credit hours while she's finishing up her GED. There's a flow chart, it's kind of hard to see. We, the high schools and adult education is everything in green and below, that's where we are. Once you get to the red, that's where you've earned your GED or your high school diploma. Anything above that, you can leave and get a job. But this is how our career pathway works and it shows you the levels of education you can get to, certificate, diploma, and associate, or you can get to that bachelor's degree. And our program is here to help students work through that as well. So, this is a new initiative across the state and it's been a wonderful initiative. I know Anderson County has eight students in their Ibest program. We have Tia this year and we're gonna look at expanding that next year to more students. So...
While Sarah's talking about the ideas, also, we had a group of students that we took for Itron. And one of the students in that group, once he finished his high school diploma or his GED, had a job waiting for him. So, now he's working at Itron, so we're proud of him. Very interesting group that we took at the time and they're getting ready to get employment.
And this is just a photograph. We had a celebration for Tia this morning for all of her hard work. She's come a long way from, I started working with her her freshman year of high school at West Oak, and she has come a long way from that point to now. So, we are incredibly excited for her and everything that lays before her. Now, we have 14 Rotary Scholars. Rotary was generous enough to offer us a scholarship fund for, can I tell the amount? For $3,000, which gave us the ability to pay for full GED test batteries for our students. And at this point in time, we've had 14 Rotary Scholars finish their GED or their high school equivalency diploma and are moving on to post-secondary education or onto employment. So, it's been a fantastic program because otherwise, these students may not have been able to pay for the cost of the test. Because as we know, at adult education, nothing is free. Everything has a fee associated with it. And so, this has been a wonderful program for our students. There are key requirements that they have to meet. They have to meet their 40 hours of attendance, they have to meet their NRS level gain, they have to meet their work keys, career readiness certificate goals. But if they meet all of those things, they're able to qualify for our Rotary Scholarship. And we've had 14 thus far and we have several more in the works. And so, we are very proud of this and we are very grateful for the Golden Corner Rotary Club for all that they've done for us. It's a total of $150 for the GED battery, so it's an expensive test for these students. And some of them do not have that. So, if they work hard and they show us what they have, then they're able to get this scholarship and it's been a wonderful thing for our students. So, okay.
At this time, we're gonna do a presentation. We're gonna ask if Mr. Abbott, Dr. Thorson might come down and Mr. Williams, they've gone on from Rotary, do a presentation. We want to take pictures, too.
Gene, why don't you present then with the chair? I'll take...
And we want to thank Seneca Golden Corner Rotary for their donation and our students favorite to a seat, who's up to see you.
session starting up in two weeks and looking forward to having more successes. So, thank you guys so much for entertaining us tonight and for letting us come and tell you about our program. So, and if you ever have any questions, please contact us. We're here to help the adult learners in Oconee County. So, thank you.
If you have anybody that you know who need to get high school equivalent degree, please send them our way. We'd be glad to help them. Again, we want to thank Sarah. Sarah just finished her leadership supervision degree from school and she is not shy about wanting my job. So, we wish her well in all that she does and we appreciate what she does at Oconee Adult Ed. All right, thank y'all for giving us opportunity to serve.
Thank you, Gene. Appreciate y'all being with us. Okay, next, on our agenda is a motion to approve tonight's agenda for the March 13th work session.
Mr. Chairman, to make the motion that we approve the work session agenda for March 13th, 2017.
Second, nobody see anything needs addressing. None at all in favor? It's unanimous. Next is public comment. Ms. Gibson, anybody sign up? No one signed up for public comment? Here none, then we'll move on to division reports. Mr. Hamby, you up first?
We are. And we have Ms. Ed Hughes, who is our Director of School Security and Student Safety, and Mr. Mark Lyles, who is our liaison with the Sheriff's Department. And we are gonna allow them to give you an update about some of the things that are going on with school security and safety, SROs and that. Now, we want to tell you, it's gonna be sort of brief and we're gonna hit on some highlights. If you want more specifics, we could be happy to give you that. But in this kind of thing, we're just trying to let you guys know what's going on in case you get questions. Because sometimes people question the things they do. And I know that Greg and him had an article on it where some people had called and that. We want to share information, but we don't want to give out too much to let folks know because sometimes the bad guys check the newspapers and other things as well. So, anyway, if there are questions afterwards, then we'll be happy to let Ms. Hughes and Mark answer those.
Did I talk to the microphone?
Yes, you did. Even with your principal voice.
I do have voice. Thank you for allowing Lieutenant Lyles and I to come and talk to you this evening. So, just generally and briefly, we're gonna go over a few things that we have done as far as safety and security updates. So, one of the first things is Lieutenant Lyles and I went to each elementary school and we met with the faculty and staff. We went over our code red procedures, safety procedures, and we gave them an opportunity to ask questions about their building, what to do if certain things happened. And they asked some good questions. And, you know, many of those were very specific to those schools. So, that was one of the first things that we did. Also, Richard Alexander, Mr. Hamby, Lieutenant Lyles and I also went to each of the elementary schools, did a walk-through, playgrounds, buildings, those types of things. And we allowed the principals to talk to us about any concerns that they had in their building and their playgrounds. And there were some changes made. And if you'd like to know the specifics of that, if you email me, I'd be more than happy to share this with you. We also changed some of our procedures on the playgrounds. When teachers go outside, they have some air horns and keys to get back in the building, procedures of how to handle certain situations. We also trained, I know one of the things that Mr. Rickett and I talked about, this is a trauma kit that every school nurse, Sherry McLaughlin, who is over our school nurse program, and myself, we trained with two individuals who came in and taught the nurses how to use the trauma kits. Each trauma kit has a tourniquet inside. Practiced the tourniquets in hopes that those nurses would then go back to their buildings, find five or six people in their building who'd like to learn how to use the trauma kit, like to learn how to use a tourniquet, in hopes that we could purchase some extra tourniquets to have throughout the school along with some trauma kits, that way if they were needed. As you know, because you graciously paid for this, we hired two additional elementary school SROs. That way, it meant we now have one in each attendance area. So, officers in the Seneca and the Westminster area each cover three elementary schools and then the Wahaahah officer has four with Tomasi, Q. Wee, Wahaahah Ellen James and Brown. We've continued with our code red drills and our trainings and changed a few things, updated a few things, and hopefully helped folks in that building feel a little better. And I'm... And I'm gonna let Lieutenant Lyles talk about that and a couple other things.
Thank you. The first thing is, the state mandates that the schools do a fire drill once a month. And that has nothing to do with the Sheriff's Office. The code red drills are done one time a year at one school. And we try, we want the schools to win. And we do not want to upset the T card, 'cause when we upset the T card, it comes back to y'all. And just trying to prepare the students and the teachers and the principals when we do this. And it's very stressful because we don't, we don't want anybody to get upset and we don't want anything to come back to y'all. One of the things is, when we talk to the faculty, when we look at their ID badge and when we run a skit, when I send an SRO in or a certified officer, I will not send anybody that's not certified to go in in your schools. When we send as an intruder, when we do this, the officers that are covering, running the code red drills are the SROs. And we're not pulling somebody off the road. And the reason we want to run the SROs is because they can take something back that they've learned from another school to their school to make their school a lot safer or more safer than, a better idea that another principal's doing. So that's what we do. One of the things when talking to the faculty, when I run the skit, we'll take the lanyard and we'll, that electronic door opener, and we'll say, "We found it in the parking lot of Walmart." We run a real list. I mean, if you look at your ID badges, it has the name of the school. It has all the names of the school. If they're at Orchard Park, if they're at West Oak High School, it has where this badge can get you in the school. So we run it, we run it on that reason. So, one of the recommendations, and I want you to think about it, is on their ID badges about just putting the school district. So if they have their lanyard and it has their school, well, most of the teachers, if you look at their lanyard, they have their classroom keys on it and they have whatever other keys they have on it. And so, what do they got? They got a way into the school and plus a set of keys. And that's the reason we tried to, for the importance of it, if they lose their ID badge, to tell their principal right off, because you're putting everybody else in harm's way. But, is there any?
Other than the trainings that the Sheriff's Office does?
We run it, and when we do block training, all our officers use the old Wahaala Middle School and we run active shooter courses. And that's an all-day event. It's in the winter and it's in the springtime, too. So we all work on our active shooters and we run scenarios.
We've set up one of the portables out there for, to be more now like a classroom and then they go inside the building to the second floor is where they do the training with the active shooter training. You know, we're working in cooperation with the Sheriff's Department, which, you know, we've had good partnerships with everybody, but you know, Sheriff Crenshaw goes above and beyond to work with us to make sure that we have a great partnership with them and do the training, get everybody on the same page.
Yes, sir.
And Mark is outstanding as the liaison between the school district and the Sheriff's Department. So, very excited about what they're doing and trying to give us every opportunity to be prepared in the event that something does happen. And he does, he's right, it does upset some people, they get some calls and that. But if you tell them beforehand, they don't take it seriously or, you know, they're going through the motions and that. So you go through it, you do it as quickly as you can, do a one call to the families to let them know. And that's one of the bad things about kids having their cellphones in there is that they're gonna be texting right away saying, but that's what happens in the places where there've been tragedies, too. I mean, they know if it's at a middle or high school, especially. Do y'all have specific questions for them that you wanna ask? So Mr. Rickett?
Yes, sir.
I guess what I'm thinking about is, you know, we have fire drills constantly. And I hate to use the phrase active shooter, because that just kinda scares people.
Code red.
Code red.
Yes, sir.
Is there a practice, and it's not necessarily involving the sheriffs or the police department, but just a drill for these, the faculty and the kids to go through to where they know to close their doors, if they're on the playground, they know to go to this spot? Without the police, do we practice something like that?
We have some schools who do their own code red drills. And they do those kinda in preparation of when we go and do the real thing. But yes, they do practice drills.
Because code red drill is very significant, you got a lot of departments involved, but the mere fact of just having the school go through something similar to a fire drill, everybody just goes out, they know how to get outside and so on, do they know how to just close up their doors, close, you know?
So it says they do it at the beginning of the year, sorta like the housekeeping details that you do at the beginning of the year. When you show them about a fire drill, a tornado drill, they do the earthquake stuff, but that is part of their training that they go through at each school level when they talk about it. And you gotta be out of sight if there's the window and the door and quiet and all those things. So they do practice those before we come in and actually do the drill.
And throughout the year, possibly, just to get them comfortable to where they're not as anxious.
Right. I would say it varies throughout school to school, but I definitely know that they do practice and prepare so that when the event comes, when they come in, like, we're still finishing them up now because after what happened in town, we stopped for several months.
Right.
Obviously, just for...
Just because of the sensitivity of it.
Right. So we feel comfortable that they are prepared and then that's why they go in, they sit down with the administrative team and they say, "Okay, why'd you do this? What happened with this? You need to be better prepared in this way." So we also look to correct mistakes.
In that conference, they referred to, you know, we have fire drills, but how many of us have had fires?
Right. It's been a long time since the last school burned.
And that's what was brought up and the situation is now on the other side. And I just wanna, and I appreciate everything y'all have done. This is quite admirable.
And the schools, the principals, all the schools, they do a great job with their code red manual and all types of emergencies and they've got a listed plan and we go over that, sit down with the principals. But all the principals, they do a great job with their faculty and staff, sitting down with them, what do they do? And when they come in, we, you know, once it's over, we clear the whole building where the officers grab the key and go and open the door and actually get the kids safety, tell them that it's okay. And then we'll make them stay in the classroom and then, under a code yellow, and then the principal will take them out of code green and put them in a code green where everything is good. After the officer's gone, physically gone in the classroom and talked to the kids and make sure everything's fine. But they do a great job with that. And then after that, we sit down and we have twenty-five tough questions for them and the principals do a great job, every one of them.
Question with the communication. Have we had issues with communication, walkie-talkies, anything like that?
Um, we actually, I have helped some schools who needed some. When we closed Tomasi Salem Middle and High School, we had extras. And I've encouraged them to talk to me if they have a need for other communication devices.
And that was, I was gonna, that was my next question. Since I'm the newbie, I don't know if I'm supposed to ask this question, but do you need anything? 'Cause there's gonna be a dollar value, but I don't mind asking.
Right. And I will tell you that Mr. Hamby has been very generous in getting us the things that we needed and doing trainings and different things like that. I would like in the future for us to look at having more of our faculty and staff, PE teachers, coaches, be trained on tourniquets and perhaps have extra ones in the school with some extra first aid kits. But we got great prices on those and I think with our current budget that that's something that schools could look into. We're good.
Anybody else? Thank y'all.
Thank y'all. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, our next part is the financial report for February that you all have had and had a chance to look at and see if there are questions from us more on that.
What is the local property tax relief reimbursement? Is that different than the tier-three property tax reimbursement?
It is. Which one can we see?
On the revenue, it's number three as opposed to number six.
Revenue and lieu of taxes is part of the fee low, the fee and lieu.
Businesses that have...
Not a wide four, I think.
So line four.
I'm sorry, four and six.
Four and...
There are actually three tax reimbursements that we get. One's homestead, one's, the first one's the local tax reimbursement, that was an earlier amount that we get. So there are actually three. It is not tier three.
And the third one is?
Tier three is number six.
That's from Act 388?
That's Act 388, yes. It is.
Just wanna be sure what they were for.
And those all come from the state. That's not a part of what we actually pay, or what our businesses pay to the county. It comes in from the Department of Revenue. And we're on the upswing. We're finally over the hump. We've got a fair amount of cash.
Some cash flowing.
For right now, yes, sir.
That's a good thing.
Yes, we are, we were supposed to have our bond sale tomorrow, but there is a blizzard forecast for New York City. So they asked if we could postpone the sale until next week. So I don't really understand that, 'cause I think they do most of what they do online, but they asked for that, so we're gonna let them, we're really gonna wait till next week.
I think they won't have power or anything.
They just keep that looped up there and we'll go along with it.
Yeah. Huge storms.
They said twenty-four inches, eighteen to twenty-four inches of snow. So, any other questions about this report?
Anybody see anything, question, anything about the expenditures for the dam?
I got one on the bottom one, I think.
This one or the next one?
Next one.
Okay.
Nope, not that one. One more.
Whoops, this was, oh, Mr. Hamby.
Now you're getting there.
Mr. Hamby.
Okay, I was just looking at the report that was sent to us and looking at the West Oak High School pre-construction field there. I was looking at the figures of costs, I couldn't get them to come out right. Could you explain those to me, please? The original budget was six hundred and ten thousand. We received another forty-six. We've spent five hundred and twenty-three, but is that four hundred and seventy-six in debt? I mean, I don't know exactly what we're trying to say here, okay?
Well, the budget is what we think we're gonna spend
Okay.
in this first phase, right?
Right, and with the farthest going on right now.
Yes.
We don't have an estimate, yeah, we don't have a guaranteed maximum yet on the whole project. We had to get the field work started because if we don't get that started, then it's not gonna be ready in time for football season. So we did a letter of agreement with Trail to get that going while we, we've had a little issue with getting the plans approved by OSF and getting all the things we need from Jumper Carter C's so that we can get as accurate a price in it as we need, 'cause it's gonna be tight. So that is a small amount. We will add in, when we have this bond sale, we will change that allocated amount for the budget and adjust it accordingly once we find out the guaranteed maximum price from Trail.
And right now, we have not gotten any bond proceeds to fund the West Oak project or the Wahaala L project. So that, this money here, the total expenditures, has been funded from our general fund on balance.
And pay back in as soon as we...
Yes.
To make the numbers out of, though, I think, the original budget is just an estimate. It really doesn't have anything to do with what's received. If you take the forty-six, that's what we have received. We've spent five twenty-three.
Yes.
That means we're four seventy-six in the hole, because we've spent more than we've received on that project.
Okay.
Right.
Because what gets us up front is the pre-design work and we pay the architects a good percentage of theirs.
We'll pay ourselves back.
Yes.
Yeah, as soon as we get that back, we will do. And we're, honestly, we're trying to get out of the habit of spending all of it before we get it, but it's kinda difficult when you've got these projects going. We got a little better, Gloria, no, we've got a little better, we don't spend it all before we get it, but it's still a process we go through to try to get that. We basically need to not do anything for a year to get that.
Well, literally, in this case, you would not have the West Oak Field and Track done until next season if we didn't do that.
Right.
Because we'd have to wait until this bond sale before we had the money to do that work. And that's why we've tried to...
As long as it doesn't hurt our cash flow, we're...
And we work, I mean, we have a...
Some days it does.
Some days, she's stocking a fan.
Makes her sweat a little bit.
We have a committee, it's myself, Richard, Gloria, and Scott Orr, and we look at that and we make sure, and as we get into the fall, when we're worried about that, we look at the town. We've already asked for potential payout schedule for both projects, so she'll know when the high dollar amounts are, 'cause it's typically like a bell curve and we'll go from there. But yeah, that's one that we, she gives us a hard time about and we understand it, but to be able to get them done, like you say, unless we take a year off, it's gonna be hard to not do it somewhat. We're trying to minimize it, but, thank you.
This is a way for money, but is the delay in the approval of plans just kinda normal or is there an issue with them or?
No, it's kinda normal with school facilities and that, with everybody involved. And it's not, you know, we'll still do the auditorium in the summer, the summer stuff will still be done and that. It's just a matter of then when we're gonna get into the ag mechanic shop and the gym and those are the priorities once we get that. That's the main things left. But we feel good about the other things and we feel really good about the field. And then once you get plans approved, you gotta get permits, like to tear down the current press box and those kinda things. We're making, we're making good progress. If we can get some cooperation at Wahaala L with the DOT, we'll make, we'll make good progress over there, too. So that's another story for another day.
Thank you.
All right, next for us is, when we moved, you heard him talk about Ms. Maine winning an award for twenty-three years. When we moved the Adult Ed Spanish Program, we had a program housed in a portable behind Jameson Brown. Had a lot of issues with that, alarm going off and just different things, and it just wasn't the best condition. So we worked it out where we could put that, those classes in O'Conney Academy, in a corner of O'Conney Academy, and that's been going well. You know, it's in a secure building, lighted parking lot, those kinda things, just a lot of things to make it better. But it left us with a portable that we needed to get rid of and, you know, that's expensive for us to move. And so we've had some conversation and the city of Wahaala came back recently to us and asked if we would donate that to them for them to use, they're doing some more things for their water department. So I would like to make the recommendation that we donate that portable behind Jameson Brown, too.
They will move it.
And they will, they will pay to move it. It's a better deal for them because it's got plans with it already, so they don't have to go get an architect to come out and do that. So it's a win-win, we think, but yes, they will move it for us. Probably be the summer before they move, it'll be moved at their expense. So we'd ask that we, you know, next week.
So we'll put that on next week's agenda for...
Please. And this will be the same thing. This was out of a conversation Dr. Thorson had with the Recreation Department, or, yeah, with her pool, who we do a lot of stuff with and we work well with them. But they were applying, trying to get some grant money to help do some field improvements and it helps them to have a lease that's extended twenty years or more, and this one had run down to about ten. So we wanna renew it. Even though it's not out of date, we wanna renew it for up to twenty or so, so that we can help them get their money and funding that they can use. It just gives them more points in a grant opportunity to have. I think there's a difference in potentially ten or twenty thousand dollars is what Herb said. So it's, it's what we plan to do, it's just doing it a little early for us to do, so we'll ask that next week you approve that and we can let them sign and that way he can say, "Well, we've got it for at least the next twenty years." So we'll do that as well next week. And I think that's it for us.
Anybody have any questions? Mr. Hamby? Here none, then Ms. Hopkins?
Yes. I am pleased to have Dr. Bright with us this evening. Many times we wind up talking about assessment data as important data, and it certainly is important data, but it's not the only data that we look at that gives us an indication of how our students are doing. So tonight, I'd like her to share with you some special education data. I challenged her, gosh, over a year... So tonight I'd like her to share with you some special education data. I challenged her, gosh, over a year ago, to see if we could make some progress on on the quality of our our program. And she has been meeting with principals, with teachers, and they've been working hard at moving this data in a more positive direction as well. And so I wanted to give her a chance to celebrate with you this evening. Dr. Bright?
Thank you. It's great to see all of you this evening. I'd like to start by sharing a line graph that shows our district percentage of students with disabilities aged three through twenty-one, which is the red line on top, compared to our national percentage of students identified with disabilities, the blue line on the bottom. And then the yellow line is our state percentage of students with disabilities. So as you can see, starting on the left with two thousand three, four, our district percentage was above the national percentage. And we had a decline for several years, which brought us closer to that blue line, which was a good thing. We leveled out in two thousand nine, ten for two consecutive years, and then we gradually started increasing again. The most recent data we have for the national percentage, the blue line, is the data point on the far right for two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. And at that time, the national percentage was thirteen percent. Our state percentage was thirteen point five, the the yellow triangle right above it. And then the red dot for Oconee County was fifteen point two percent. For two consecutive years, our percentage continued to increase. And the good news is that for the first time in five years, our data point is heading in the right direction. And we dropped from sixteen or sixteen point one percent to sixteen percent. Something that we've done in our department for several years, we conduct a systematic random sample of IEPs and we review those IEPs for compliance. And something that we noticed in some of those IEPs is that we had high school students that were reading on grade level or above, doing math on grade level or above, enrolled in honors courses, AP courses. There was no justification to support that those students needed specialized instruction, which is the definition under IDEA. So in having some conversations with some teachers and teams, we learned that in some cases, those teams wanted to hold on to those IEPs for post-secondary accommodation purposes as a safety net, or they wanted to hold on to the IEPs as a just-in-case tutorial from a special education teacher. So we provided professional development to our teachers repetitively about the definition of specialized instruction and what it means. Something else that we've done is we've collected data on a district level about kids who exit special education. That's not required by the state, but it's something that we feel is important. We need to know how many of our kids that are special education are exited to general education and to try to alleviate this mindset of once special ed, always special ed. So any questions about this line graph?
The last statement that you made, it's interesting about exiting the special. Are you finding that there is a good number that's actually exiting the special ed program?
It is increasing, yes. At to date, we've had sixteen students exit special ed to reg- regular ed. Last year, the whole course of the year, we had nine. The year before that, we had six. So at this point of the year, we've almost doubled how many have exited compared to last year.
Do you do you have to use a whole psychological test to in order to exit the student?
Not necessarily.
Have to do that?
No, sir. The team can look at existing data and test scores and make a determination that they no longer need specialized instruction without having to do a full psychological.
That's good.
If a parent asks that they not be signed out, though, what do we do? They may sometimes want them to get that extra help.
Correct. And that's when we just have to look at the data. The data needs to do the talking for us. So we ask those questions. What is it that you believe specialized instruction is going to do for your child? Why do they need a special education teacher to sit down beside them and provide that specialized instruction?
Can a five oh four take place?
Yes, sir, it can. Yeah. Very good. All right. Our next source of data is a bar graph that shows where students or how much time a student with a disability spends in a general education classroom. So starting with the left side, and that's the year two thousand and eight, you can see the highest bar is the green bar. The green bar represents students that spend eighty percent or more of their day in a general education classroom. And for all students, the general education classroom is the least restrictive environment. And we want our kids with IEPs to spend the most time they can in the general education classroom. The red bar represents kids that are served in the general education classroom for forty to seventy-nine percent of the day. So we have some students that are pulled out for one period, maybe two periods of resource. They're pulled out for vision services, hearing services, speech pathology, OT, PT. So that red bar is that next group underneath that would fall underneath that eighty percent of the day. The blue bar is really the one that we're most interested in because the blue bar represents our kids that spend less than forty percent of the day in the general education setting. So these are our self-contained students, the ones that we typically refer to as self-contained. So you can see that in two thousand and eight, we had a a nice stair step where most of the kids were served in the general ed classroom, eighty percent of more of the day, followed by that second forty to seventy-nine, and the smallest group was served in a self-contained classroom. The nice thing about those first four years is that we were also at or very close to the state target for our percentage of kids served in the least restrictive environment, and that is eighteen point four eight percent. We don't want more than eighteen point four percent of our kids to spend the less than forty percent of the day in the gen ed or in self-contained. So we did great up until two thousand and eleven. But as you can see, in two thousand and twelve, something changed, and we went from eighteen and a half percent to over twenty-two percent of our kids served in a self-contained classroom. And that red group became smaller where we had more kids served in self-contained than in the second group. The year after that, it went up again to twenty-three percent. So we were heading in the wrong direction. What we did is we started spotlighting this information. We presented school-level data to principals. We spoke with our special education teachers about the importance of keeping kids in the least restrictive environment. We presented the data to our school psychologists because they're also involved in these decisions. The good news is that for the last three years, our percentage has gradually come down again. And so we are closer to that eighteen point four eight percent.
Was it, pardon, was it something in the way of testing? Had the test changed or?
Um. It's a very good question, but we could not define why that change happened. We had a lot of discussion in our groups about why that is. We talked about maybe how scheduling may impact this and that school schedules sometimes limit a student being able to access the classes that they need because they're not available. So it could be different reasons, but we could not pinpoint. There was a lot of discussion around it, though.
Do you do you have a self-contained class in every school?
Yes, sir, we do.
Elementary, middle, and high?
Yes.
Some have multiple.
Some have multiple.
So we have multi-categorical self-contained classes, and then we also have what we call our functional self-contained classes. And then we have behavior self-contained classes as well. Okay, the very last thing I'd like to share with you. We're going to skip this one. I'm so sorry. It opened up the wrong one. It should be. Okay, we'll close that one out. We're going to find it. It's on here.
Okay. You just had it?
There it is. That's it. Okay. This year, we were able to spend some money on training registered behavior technicians. Last year, our district received a grant from the Department of Disabilities and Special Needs called the Innovative Autism Grant, which allowed us to train six individuals, repair professionals, to be registered behavior technicians. Because we noticed that in our district, our principals had a need for behavior support. So we trained existing staff to become RBTs because the grant did not pay for FTEs. It did not pay for positions, only for training. So we selected six individuals that were either serving as companion aids or they were serving as additional classroom support. And there were two that were assigned to each geographic area. Actually, four of those positions were assigned as companion aids to students, and two of those positions were additional classroom support. At the beginning of the year, only one of those RBTs had the flexibility to travel to schools because the other five were either serving their student or providing support to the classroom. And the goal of providing the training was for the RBT to build capacity at the school level so that they could fade back and begin to travel and serve other schools. Now it's switched around. We have five RBTs that are traveling and only one that is still attached to the school because of the needs of the classroom. So but this is a summary of our data. We have received to date twenty-three requests for an RBT to travel to a school. So they're traveling to serve a student that's not in the building that they're currently serving. So we've had eight referrals from Seneca or requests for RBT support, ten requests from West Oak, and then five requests from Wahala. And if you scroll down a little, although that doesn't seem like a very high number, there are actually sixty-one students that have been served because those registered behavior technicians are serving students within their own building and providing some consult services. And then finally, some of the a description of the types of support that they provide. Thirteen have helped with functional behavior assessments. We've had six help with behavior intervention plans. Thirteen students have been returned to a lesser restrictive environment because of RBT support. So on the slide just a minute ago where we talked about the need to serve kids in the least restrictive environment, one of the goals of registered behavior technicians is to help improve that child's behavior so that they can spend more time in the general education class. Number of assisted plans for independence. Kids who have one-on-one support with an adult. We write a plan for independence targeting which parts of their day they're most likely to be independent. And our registered behavior technicians assist with that as well. We have five students that have reduced AEA, that's additional education assistance, where maybe they had sixty percent of their day helped from an adult, and it was reduced to less than that. And then finally, they have helped with thirty-seven check-in, check-outs. And that's where they check in with the student to see, are they ready to start their day? Do you have what you need? What is our agreement for your behavior today? And then they check out with them at the end of the day to see if they reached their goals. So I'm confident that next year, the status is going to get even better because we're going to start the year with at least five of them ready to travel and be able to serve, so.
These RBTs are really important. As Dr. Bright spoke about them, they may be going to various schools because of an individual student. But really, a lot of the work that they're doing is with the staff on how to work with that student. So when they're working on the plans and and assisting, they may be doing some basic investigation to understand what's what's going on with that child so they can troubleshoot it. But then the the goal is to really empower the staff at that school. And so that's part of why we believe that we're going to see a reduction in companion aids over time because we're hoping that staff will have. This is a way of professional development and support as we go forward. So so we're excited to be seeing some trends in the right direction, and I appreciate Dr. Bright. And let's give some friends with their parents providing moral support tonight, too, but they've been working hard. And our principals and our teachers have been doing a great job working with them to get the kinds of of results that we're beginning to see.
Do we know how many companion aids, actual companion aids, do we have?
We actually do keep track of that in in Canvas, and I would be happy to provide that information to you. It it can vary quickly. You know, sometimes we we might add three in a week and other times we might lose two in a week. So moves a lot, but I can give you a general idea if you'd like that information.
Good, because if you just send us a.
Thank you.
Sure.
Your terminology always amazes me when I listen to you. It takes a while for me to digest it. Do they, do these individuals work with mental health counselors or how do they work with them? Or is it something separate from or?
In some cases, they are working together. It depends on the individual needs of the student. The mental health counseling referrals come from the school. The way that the RBT referrals work is I receive a direct request from the principal with the paperwork that gives me an idea of what the students' needs are. And then I send it to the registered behavior technician and I copy to the principal and to the school psychologist so that they can have a way to triangulate data for functional behavior assessment. So there's multiple folks involved in that team process. It's not just the registered behavior technician trying to swoop in, fix the problem, and exit. They are really providing support to the school-level team and what kind of data needs to be collected and how to write a plan. In some cases, some of those students have already been receiving mental health counseling services.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
My other topic this evening is just the locally board-approved courses. And I had shared with that with you about that last month, and I just want to make sure that we answered any questions that you may have about those because we do need to get those approved next time we meet. Were there any additional questions that you folks had?
You'll have those listed. Maybe you can highlight.
I'll have the list for you. Yes.
It will continue to build, too, will it not?
Absolutely.
That's what I thought I I read. It's not just this snapshot what you're going to give us. There's going to be more coming.
Well, you have the the course catalog if you actually want to see the courses, but what I'll do for you next time is just list those out. Is that, am I answering your question?
I think so. Yes.
Okay.
Any other question? Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Okay. If you can believe it or not, it's time to rehire the staff again. So it's contract renewal time. And so what I'm doing tonight is just giving you an overview of the number of contracts that we plan to bring back to you to approve in the the first meeting in April. As you know, the timeline to as far as when contracts can be issued, they amended that. The State Board amended that rule. So now is before May the eleventh. So May tenth is when they should get them to us because it's essentially May eleventh is at midnight. So we will still like to give out contracts in April. April eighteenth is right after spring break. While they're not due back, like we would normally have ten days to return them April twenty-fifth, we we're hoping that it would get them in the hands of teachers and they can give us a decision as to whether or not they're going to return. So still sticking with that April date, but legally, they're not due back until before May the eleventh. Vacancies, we learned of vacancies that we need to fill, the letters of intent that we sent out in December. So those vacancies are not listed, of course, in the number of contracts. How do we look right now? The total number of contracts that we will be issuing is about eight hundred and seventy-two, which is essentially about the same as last year. And this is a visual to kind of let you see how many we'll give out at elementary level, at the middle school level, high school level, and then the additional locations. For elementary, we have a total of four hundred and fifty-three, which is last year was around four fifty-six. And as you can see, again, Blue Ridge and Jameson Brown have been our Title I schools. But as you know, now all of our schools will be Title I schools, but those are our bigger elementary schools, followed by North Side. So at elementary, there'll be four hundred and fifty-three. Middle school is about a hundred and eighty-one contracts. That's up a little bit from one seventy-seven last year. And of course, keep in mind, we put the Tomasi Salem Middle and High School folks. We had to reassign them when that school closed. So so that number went up because of the number of teachers that we added there at the middle school, Wahala Middle. At the high schools, we have a hundred and ninety-eight. Last year was about the same, one ninety-seven. Wahala High being where we have the most contracts sent. Additional locations, which include the Career Center, Oconee Academy and Adult Ed, that number is forty, which is down a little bit to forty-six last year. A lot of this at. A lot of this, at Adult Ed, of course, we have at-will employees. So those are part compositions, so those numbers are a little lower there. And of course, Oconee Academy, just having the basic number of teachers that we need there for those students. High school math, middle school math, high school ELA, middle school ELA, and social studies. So as I said, April 3 is when we'll have those ready for you. We'll send that out a little sooner, so you can have time to look at that prior to that board meeting. Looking ahead, at the end of the month, I'll be going out to the schools and meeting with any staff that's displaced, also at-will employees. You know, we have that big group that's ending their Terry, either at the end of this school year or in December. That's probably about 28 folks that are listed there. By the end of 2018, it should be about 62. So we'll be meeting with them to talk about their interests or desire to return. I do foresee having middle-level math and secondary math and science. As far as a vacancy, special ed, we have some vacancies, because there are several special ed teachers that are in that group, and as well as those that we have resignations from, and then also speech. Being proactive, what have we done to fill vacancies? March 1, we had a student-teacher interview day. We had about 26 of our student teachers to come in for interviews. Dr. Thorson actually got the interview of math candidate for us. So very good candidates out there, but we wanted to reach out to our student teachers and see the talent that we have, and hopefully to get them to sign with us once we get these contracts out and know, get a definitely answer from folks whether they're returning. Also, we are having an Oconee County Alternative Certification Information Fair. We've asked the State Department to come and talk to folks that are not certified to let them know that there are alternative methods to getting certified. So for example, if you have a bachelor's degree, you did not major in education, but you want to be a teacher, there's several alternative paths to being certified. And so that's going to be at Seneca High School next Thursday, March 23. We're actually sending out a flyer to Pickens and Anderson Districts 1 through 5, so that they can, if they have folks that are interested. So just with the teacher shortage that I shared with you a few weeks ago, just what are we doing to reach out to other folks to fill vacancies? And I feel good about having the Alternative Certification Fair, because we get a lot of people to call us and say, look, what can I do? You know, I'd love to, you know, try teaching. And so we hope to have a big turnout for that. And other information about retirement, resignations, and changes will be in the executive session. Any questions for me or comments?
Are we giving any early contracts?
We have, yes, we have.
Should you run on some of these that really, we need to grab them quick?
Right. And particularly, special ed. And I know March has done a lot with speech, because we've had a big turnover there. But we're definitely giving early contracts to those folks in those critical need positions.
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, that ends the agenda for the open session. We need a motion to go in the executive session to discuss personnel items, employment recommendations, changes, and a student appeal.
Mr. Chairman, I move we move into executive session for personnel items, employment recommendations, and changes of a student appeal.
Second. Have a motion in a second. All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank y'all for being with us. If there's any action, we'll have to take that after the executive session. Well, we'll go back into, yeah, we're back into regular session, out of the executive session. Do we have a motion regarding employment recommendations and changes?
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the administration's recommendation for employment recommendations and changes.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor? It's unanimous. Do we have a motion regarding our student appeal?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we uphold the recommendation of the administration on the student appeal.
I second it.
Motion in a second. All in favor? That is also unanimous. Motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, will you adjourn?
I'll second that.
Somebody go second. Thank you. You ain't got to tell me what that is.